I'll go ahead and read. So, welcome everyone to the, where are we? The December 8th, 2020 redevelopment agency meeting, I guess I should say, the board members. Let me read this statement for everybody. This is the council chair determination to hold electronic meetings without anchor location. In accordance with Utah Code 5232074, I have determined that conducting meetings of the Ogden City Council with an anchor location presents a substantial risk to the health and safety of those who may be present due to the infectious nature and potentially dangerous health effects of contracting the COVID-19 virus. This determination is based on the following. The Center for Disease Control and Prevention, or the CDC, has determined that COVID-19 is easily spread between or among people who are in close contact with each other through airborne respiratory droplets, and may be spread by people who are non-symptomatic. The state of Utah has developed the COVID-19 transmission index through a collaborative effort among state and local health officials, elected officials, the hospital industry, and business leaders. As of December 1st, 2020, Weber County was on the high transmission category, limiting group gatherings to 10 people or less. Based on the foregoing, all public meetings, including work sessions and meetings of the redevelopment agency, will be held electronically through December 31st, 2020. Information on how to connect to the electronic public meetings will be posted on each agenda. The public may comment during the electronic meeting and public hearings on agenda items designated for input and during or during the general public comment period. Written public comments may also be submitted through the following electronic options. Telephonic message at 801-629-8158. Public comment submission form at ogdencity.com-publicinput or email at citycouncil@ogdencity.com. And this statement was issued and became effective December 1st, 2020. So, please let the record reflect that all council members are present at this time, or board members are present at this time. Great. Vice Chair Blair, would you mind doing the pledge of allegiance?
I'd be happy to.
Thank you.
Yeah, so with that, I would just ask all board members and those attending with us to please rise and repeat the pledge of allegiance after me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Now, please join me in a moment of silence. Thank you all. Next on the agenda, we have approval of minutes. We have the regular meeting of May 12th, 2020, as well as the regular meeting of June 9th, 2020. Both read by Board Member Lopez.
Yes, Chair, I reviewed the minutes and found them to be correct, and I move that we approve the minutes.
All second.
We have a motion by Board Member Lopez, a second by Board Member Hayer to approve the minutes. All in favor?
All right.
Any opposed? Thank you. Up next, we have reports from administration. We're inviting Brandon Cooper, the Business Development Deputy Director, to talk with us about the Continental Land Transfer and Development Agreement. Welcome, Brandon.
Thank you. Good evening. It's nice to see all of your faces, at least virtually. Thanks for having me. Before you tonight is the proposed Resolution 2020-3, which authorizes the executive director to execute a land transfer and development agreement with J.F. Wonderblock Partners QOZB LLC. So, say that fast five times, and I think you win the prize. This is something that we have discussed a number of times in work sessions. So, tonight, it's my pleasure just to walk you through a little bit of the history of the project, most of which has been summarized very well in your packet by Janine. So, thank you, Janine, for that summary as usual. But if I may share my screen, I have just a single slide to illustrate some of the topics that are in the packet, and then just discuss how the LTDA is functioning. So, I'm assuming you all see the roadmap screen here. This is just an illustrative example of, again, what's in the packet. It identifies the areas of influence that the RDA board, or excuse me, the RDA staff tends to have in individual projects throughout the city. This applies to projects that are either initiated by the RDA or projects that have come to us via proposal by third parties. Acquisition, master planning, demolition, environmental cleanup, infrastructure, and incentives are generally the five areas that we find ourselves participating in as a government body. Wonderblock is no different. We pursued this project as a self-initiated endeavor back in 2016 with the purchase of the Continental Bakery site, the subsequent demolition of that, and the ongoing environmental cleanup that we're pursuing right now. Since then, there has been a lot of energy and attention given to this site from ourselves as staff and also from third-party developers and design teams on what to do with the project and the property. It's also become a component part of our recently adopted Make Ogden Plan. And so, these are the things that we have been looking at in terms of assisting the project and making it really become one of the best projects in the city in terms of the land use. We have worked with J.F. Capital on the master planning, as indicated on this roadmap. As I mentioned, we've done site work and demolition to assist with the project. And now, we're at the point where we are looking at the incentives that are necessary to make the project feasible. All of these categories are really meant to assist in project feasibility. The RDA's purpose and mission is to assist with projects that aren't usually market feasible for one reason or another. And when we get involved with things like property acquisition and demolition and the conveyance of incentives, those are all for reasons that are necessary to make the project feasible. It's the "but for" analysis. That's probably something you've heard before. But for the involvement of the RDA in these areas, then something like this wouldn't generally be feasible to take place. So, that's a little context related to why we're here and how we've gotten here. And that brings us to the Land Transfer and Development Agreement. This is a city, or excuse me, an agency document that is typical when we look at projects that have a conveyance of land. It's to ensure that, once the conveyance of land occurs, that certain development activities take place and certain commitments are made, both by the agency and by the developer partner. This Land Transfer and Development Agreement really has four conditions. So, what you're approving tonight is not necessarily the conditions of the agreement. A lot of the things that we'll be studying as a result of the approval tonight, if that takes place, would be the parking structure and the incentives via tax increment, the state court agreement, and the master leasing. All of those things need continual study and analysis. So, you won't be approving those actual agreements. You're approving the Land Transfer and Development Agreement that sets up the conveyance of the agency property in the event and subject to the successful approval of these four agreements in the future. So, let me take a moment just to cover each one. The first one is an agreement with the state courts. Right now, they own a portion of the property that is necessary to make the project feasible. And they have indicated to us that they are willing to convey that property to the city or to the agency and allow the agency to then convey that to the developer as part of the overall package in exchange for the agency replacing the 100 parking stalls that would be lost in that conveyance. And so, that's something that has been discussed and talked about extensively with the state and with the DFCM. And we have a structure, at least a framework, in the LTDA that contemplates how that would take place. But those agreements between the agency and the court are yet to materialize. And so, that would be one condition of the LTDA. One of the terms that the state has put in place is that they would want to have those 100 parking stalls replaced in the form of structured parking. And they would like the structured parking to be owned by the agency, not by a developer. They've had some scenarios in the past in other parts of the city, or excuse me, the state, where they have had parking provided to them by a third-party developer, and they've had struggles with that in terms of maintenance and longevity. So, they requested that this structure be owned and operated and maintained by the agency. So, that is one of the things that we will continually work on, subject to tonight's action. The second agreement would be a participation incentive agreement. Again, this is an agreement to come in the future. And it's also a typical agreement that you all, as the board, have seen numerous times. It contemplates the conveyance of tax increment for the purpose of covering any financial gaps in the project. Those gaps might be because of increased construction costs. They could be because excessive land development costs. So, that study is being conducted right now by the developer and by the city. And so, through the continental community reinvestment area, the agency has the ability to convey tax increment up until 2039. It would not be contemplated to be 100% contribution at this point. We are looking at preserving some of that tax increment that's generated by the project to be used for portions of the 25th, 26th Street infrastructure project that would benefit the overall Wonderblock project. So, again, tonight's action would be subject to the final acceptance and approval of that participation and incentive agreement in the future. The third agreement is the master lease agreement. What this does is establishes a master lease between the city and the developer for the lease of a certain portion of the office and retail components of the master plan. And what that does is that aids in financing in terms of the developers' financing activities with third-party lenders and others. So, that helps get that type of product off the ground. It also helps us to recruit certain retailers that we think will be key for this type of a development. This is a little bit different than anything else we've seen in that other developments, take the junction, for instance. Those developments were designed and built. And then, once the structure was in place, or soon before, leasing activities would start to take place, and the hopes of filling those spaces would, you know, take the place of having real tenants. And it could take, in some cases, years to get tenants to fill those spaces. At the junction, we have space that has never been filled, just given its weird configuration and proximity. So, in this project, it's intended to curate, so to speak, some of the users and tenants of the project in order to open on day one with an experience. Research has told us that these types of projects really rely heavily on the experience. If you've been to other similar projects in Denver or in California, in even here in Utah, at City Creek and Station Park, a lot of these places really rely on a robust experience to make them successful. So, opening the doors on day one with a certain level of occupancy by a certain type of tenants will be really key. And so, having a master lease agreement just allows us to curate that space. There will be, in that master lease agreement, there will be language that prioritizes how leasing takes place in terms of which space gets filled first, if it's the developer space, or if it's the city space, and how we can ultimately vacate that master lease as quickly as possible. So, we'll deal with that in language in that agreement. And again, that's to come forward as a condition of the LTDA. And last but not least, the parking structure agreement is also a condition. And again, that goes to the requirement set upon us by the state in that they would like the agency to own and operate the structure. So, that structure would be on the southwest corner of the property, excuse me, southeast. And it would total approximately about 754 total stalls. 100 to 200 of those stalls would be dedicated to the state courts. And then, the remaining of the stalls would be leased by the users of the property, so the office users and the residential unit users, as well as the public. They would be able to pay at the gate and park for a fee. And so, all of those revenue sources would contribute to the cost of the parking structure. This concept is being folded into the general city, or downtown-wide parking study that we've been doing with Greg Montgomery in the planning department. And it would contemplate a larger parking strategy in that it would likely trigger on-street parking, paid-on-street parking, and potentially other things that would go along with having our very first paid parking structure. So, again, in order for the land transfer to actually take effect, these four documents would have to be negotiated, proposed to the board or to the city council, and eventually approved before that conveyance would take place. So, before going on to anything else, I would love to hear any comments or questions.
Any comments or questions?
Yeah, Angela, I do have a question. It's based on one of the comments you made about the junction, Brandon, that some of those places aren't leased and haven't been. My far-back memory recalls that we really kind of made some errors in the way we set the junction up. The leasing agent really was not incented to actually lease out the spots because of, I think, our guarantee of income, whether they were leased out or not. I'm not sure if that was exactly how it worked. You probably understand it better than me. But are we, in this master lease agreement, making sure that there isn't incentive to get these spots leased and drawing in income and revenue?
Yeah, I think that's a really good point. We have learned quite a bit from what has taken place at the junction. And part of the reason why the junction has sat empty in certain locations is because the motivation factor of the landlord. There is a certain level of debt service that is covered by the city, regardless of the occupancy. And so, there really is no incentive for discounts or concessions to be made. And it's actually, in some cases, more beneficial to stay vacant than it is to occupy it at possibly a lower rate. So, I think we've learned a lot from that relationship and that deal, enough to inform our decisions on this deal. As I mentioned a minute ago, there would be a heavy focus given to the prioritization of the leasing and to ensure that the developer's space was not being leased out first, while the city held a master lease, effectively giving the developer 100% occupancy. So, we would avoid a situation like that, and we would ensure that we're not making some of the same mistakes at the junction. The other contributory factor of vacancy at the junction is just the overall design and configuration of the space. And so, again, I think there's lots of lessons to be learned here regarding that. And the developer actually has commissioned a large team of design professionals, branding professionals, retail strategists, those types of folks, to help make some of those decisions.
Could you make that a bullet point when you talk to us in the future about those, the lease agreement particularly, so that we understand how the city is protected in that?
Yeah.
Thank you.
I also had a question about, it was actually from a constituent that was asking. And I think we've answered it before in other meetings. But just to clarify, why wouldn't we have more of the kind of deal like we have at a BDO property where we retain ownership of the land in some way? Would you mind speaking to that a little bit, Brandon?
Yeah, it's a good question. It's a smart observation. The reason largely is because they're two entirely different products. So, for instance, the BDO land was a conveyance to us by the federal governments at zero cost. This land has economic value to it in relationship to the cost that we've extended and also the cost of development. And so, for that reason, it doesn't quite pencil the same way as the BDO structure pencils. And that's something that we looked at early on to see if there's an income potential here for the city. But as I mentioned in the roadmap discussion, as we look at acquisition and potential conveyance of land, those are two things that become tools for us to effectuate, to effectuate the pencil financially. So, does that make sense? It's just not an apples-to-apples comparison because of the product type.
Yeah, I agree. Well, and just special kind of partnership we have with Boyer, you know, with that sort of organization, I agree.
Right.
Any other questions or comments from board members?
I have one on the parking.
Yeah.
The paid parking is not a new concept in Ogden. Back in the, when they had the ZCMI, the parking terrace there, that was paid, and there were paid lots throughout the city. But how does this paid parking, does that benefit 25th Street at all?
As part of our overall parking study, we're looking at ways to soften the impact to our local businesses. I think, you know, that there is always a cost of parking. There is no such thing as free parking. And so, whether or not customers and businesses have been able to park without actually physically paying for that privilege at the time they park, doesn't mean that there hasn't been a huge cost of parking across the city. And we're coming to the point in our studies that it's telling us that we have sufficient parking in the downtown. In fact, I can't quote the numbers. I know Greg can. But even in our peak-time parking hours, we aren't 100% utilized. And one of the observations has been that, even though we have sufficient stalls to serve the individual uses in the downtown, those stalls aren't available in the right areas at the right time. So, one of the strategies of the Make Ogden Plan is to consolidate the parking, not necessarily grow our number of parking stalls, although that will also happen. But it's meant to consolidate parking, not only to put the right parking in the right place, but also to free up the land that the surface parking lots currently occupy so that we can increase our development density. That hearkens back to the study, the Minnokazi Study, that tells us that our highest taxable value land is the densest land. And so, when we have a large part of our downtown covered in surface parking lots, we're not using our land to the highest and best value, or highest and best use, which creates the highest value. So, part of what we're doing with these parking structures is consolidating parking, freeing up the parking lots around the city that could then be developed into productive uses. So, when we look at 25th Street and other places that rely heavily on that kind of thing, then our parking study will tell us how many hours we can offer for free. So, there'll be some kind of a grace period that you see in other typical places, like Salt Lake and other metropolitan areas, where the first hour is free or the first two hours are free. We're working that out right now in our modeling. But that certainly will be one of the tools that we use to mitigate the impact to businesses.
Yeah, I noticed you brought up Salt Lake. I believe Salt Lake is going more to paid parking than what they had in the past. But I think that's an avenue that we need to explore a little bit.
Yeah, they've had on-street paid parking for a number of years now. And if you just park on the curb, you're required to pay, and there isn't a grace period of an hour or something like that. I believe Saturdays and Sundays are free, which is something that we would look into as well. Beyond 5:00, I believe, is also free. But the paid private stalls at City Creek and other places downtown, there is a grace period generally of an hour, sometimes two hours. So, there's lots of examples out there that we can use to help mitigate the impact to our local business.
Yeah, I was gonna ask you about that, that sort of grace period or validation or something like that, if they shop on 25th Street, maybe.
Yep.
Any other questions or comments? So, did you have any else, board member Stevens?
Well, they used to give tokens or parking items for people who shop the retail establishments, and they were able to subsidize maybe that, maybe that's not the right word to say, but able to park in the parking terrace at a lower cost, so.
I think you're able to continue, Brandon.
Okay, thank you. I'm about finished. I just wanted to bring up the picture that's in your packet. This is just a perspective view of the proposed, the orange buildings here on the southeast view. Those are apartment buildings. The large pink building is an office building. You can see one of the parking structures that is adjacent to the state court building. And then, the main consideration for this plan is this north-south linkage from essentially 25th Street down to 26th Street that allows a strong connection to 25th Street. So, this is meant to blend in, to tie into, and to augment the experience that currently exists on historic 25th Street. This gives visitors to the street another avenue or another potential experience to have when they come and visit downtown. The dark purple building is a proposed hotel. And again, all of these uses are meant to operate as a cohesive, curated, programmed experience that allows that center spine to be opened up for activities that currently exist. For instance, Farmer's Market now has more real estate to use during the summer in terms of utilizing that spine area. The car show could somehow be implemented through that area. It's certainly going to be an active space that will feel comfortable. It will be connected to the businesses and the residences that are there. And so, we hope that it just gives another reason for people to come downtown and to visit 25th Street and to go to the restaurants and shops that will be on 25th Street and in this project. So, with that, I am done with my information, and I'll be happy to take any more questions.
Anything from anyone? Don't see any at this time, Brandon.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. So, if there's no more questions or discussion, we can go ahead and open up the meeting for public input. Brandon, do you mind explaining to folks, Brandon Garside, I should say, would you mind explaining to folks how they might participate?
Not at all. Thank you, Chair. To participate or to provide input on this item to the city council, you need to be, or to the RDA board, excuse me. You need to be joining us via Zoom and by using the raise hand feature, which has been enabled. As I double-check it again, and then we'll get you in the queue, and we can get things started.
Not seeing any hands raised.
Chair, I believe the developer partner Chair, I believe the, the developer partner team is here and I'm not sure if they're having technical difficulties, but I believe they would like to say something in public comment.
Sure. And do you know what their name might be, appear to be?
Robert Taylor.
Oh, great. Brandon, would you mind allowing them to speak if they'd like?
Sure, Robert Taylor. The time is yours. Please let me your comments to three minutes and state your name for the record.
Thanks for your hand, too.
You're welcome. Thank you, Madam Chair and members of the city council and Mr. Cooper. My name is Robert Taylor. I'm owner's representative for JF Capital and JF Companies, representing Wonder Block. I can just say thank you very much for your time and attention this evening. I myself have not spent as much time as our principal managing partner Chad Besinger regarding this project. But I think I have met maybe some of you or most of you when you came to Denver and we hosted you at the Dairy Block. At that time, I was the project director for McWhinney and so it was through that visit and through association with the fine team of consultants that we maintained a friendship and a good business relationship. And I was happy to join the Wonder Block team in July to help them with this process. This is a very splendid opportunity that you have here. And we are very, very eager and very happy to support the Make Ogden Plan effort, all the time and effort over the past two years you've put into identifying your, your downtown core area and to strengthen it with the goals and policies that are shown in the Make Ogden Plan. The evolution of the Wonder Block plan has been just splendid, both from the private sector and the consultants that JF has assembled over the, throughout the country and locally. And of course, the type of cooperation that we've received from Ogden and its staff members, including their participation, what we call the summit, which was held in mid-September to bring everyone together and discuss this plan. And from this, you see the results that Mr. Cooper had shown you with the conceptual plan, the land uses and the strategic placement of the parking. And of course, embracing all the goals and policies of Make Ogden to kind of create an extension of the Twenty-Fifth Street to make it a valuable asset to the community, which we can all share in. So other than, you know, thanking you for this opportunity, we are very committed to this project and we want to proceed in accordance with good spirits and valuable contributions to make to the Make Ogden Plan to make this really become a reality and not just a plan or document that sits on a shelf, but to actually work with execution and work with deliberate nature. That's all I have to say, but if Mr. Besinger is on, my client, I'll yield my time to him.
Thank you, Robert. And I guess, yeah, it looks like Chad might have already been part of the panel. Would you like to make comment?
Sure, yeah. This is, can you guys all hear me? Great. This is Chad Besinger. I'm a principal of JF. You know, it's funny, as a developer here locally in Utah, it typically doesn't take us that long to get to a, to get to a concept plan. But this has kind of been three years in the making. And there's been many times where we've, you know, we've put pencil to paper and we've just kind of ripped it up or crumpled it up and thrown it across the room and, and started over. And I'll tell you what, the, when we compiled the professionals that we did that have done similar type projects and they all came and they all visited Ogden, got to know your city, got to lot, got to know many of your staff. It didn't take us long to come up with what we believe is the, the best plan possible for, for this site. And I can't tell you how excited we are as, as at JF to, to be a part of this. We've enjoyed working with, with all of your staff members, with the mayor, with Brandon Cooper. Everybody within each of your departments has, has been, has been great. And as Brandon said, you know, there's still, there's still four agreements to go. This is, this is kind of the first. But it really sets the stage of, of, you know, a super successful project. And, you know, we're excited to do that. We've got, we've got a lot of, we've got a lot of staff within JF that live in and around Ogden. And so they're, they're obviously super, super excited about this. And we've got quite a few people in our, in our company that graduated from Weber State. So this is kind of your home team. We feel very fortunate to be a part of this and, and really have people want to come to Ogden to have a great experience. And I think that's what we can provide with this plan.
Well, thank you so much. Do any other, um, public input or would anybody else like to give any public input? Not seeing any additional hands. So unless there's more discussion, I'd be happy to consider a motion.
Chair, I'll make that motion that we adopt proposed Resolution 2020-3.
I'll second it.
Here we have a motion by board member Hare and a second by board member White to adopt proposed Resolution 2020-3.
Board member Nadolsky. Board member Hare. Board member Lopez. Board member Stevens. Board member White. Vice Chair Blair. Chair Chaburka.
Aye, and that passes. Thank you again for all of your work on this, Brandon.
Thank you, everyone. Appreciate it.
Next time, I invite Executive Director Caldwell, if you'd like to make any comments.
I would just say thank you all for your participation in this. This has been a multi-year project. One of the things we've talked a lot about is involving the public and getting everybody's feedback and looking at this. And JF Capital's been a great partner in being local and being willing to listen to all those comments. I have seen most of you, a lot of these different planning meetings, and it really matters. And so this is a big event and we really appreciate the work that Brandon Cooper and our CED team have put into this. But we really appreciate those that are making investments and willing to see the vision of what's happening in downtown and, and appreciate all of your support. Means the world to all of us that have put so much time and energy and effort into this. And thank you all very much for being involved in the process. That's what, that, that's what really matters. So thank you very much and I'll leave it at that.
Thank you. Any other board members like to make comment?
Chair, can I take a few minutes? I also would like to thank Brandon for his work on this. And as we go into the holiday season, remember to shop in Ogden. That's, that's important to us. And the, and Chad's mentioned, Besinger mentioned that a lot of their employees and associates are associated with Ogden. So we encourage them to come in and enjoy the, the shopping here in Ogden. The other thing is I'd like to thank the administration for the pies they delivered today. They looked great. And last, or last comment is be a mask. Thank you.
I like it. Any other board member comments?
I just have one quick one and, and many of you, I miss seeing many of you, all of you, I should say, in the, in the chambers. And I had a weird thought of one of our members that often came and Ralph Price. And I, I, you know, it, it's people like Ralph that kept us on our toes. And, and I appreciate that we're doing our best in Zoom, but hopefully by wearing our masks, we will be back in the chamber soon. So anyways, that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Any other comments?
I'm just really eager to get going on this Wonder Block. I think that has some, you know, I have some pent-up excitement about that. I, I hope I live long enough to see it clear through and be able to enjoy it. It's, these things do happen a little slower than I wish we, than I think we wish it would, but looking forward to it. And thanks, Brandon and, and Tom and everybody that's worked on this. Thank you so much.
I have faith you're gonna make it. Any other comment? Well, thanks again, everyone. And I think as we may consider adjourning this meeting because we have another meeting coming right up.
Then I'll make that motion that we adjourn.
Second.
I have a motion by board member Hare, a second by vice chair Blair to adjourn on favor. Any opposed? Thank you. Now it might take just a moment to reset for the recorder, so I'll just give it a moment here.
Chair Chaburka, we are good to continue.
Thank you, Brandon. And recorder. Welcome everyone to the December 8, 2020 Special City Council meeting. Please let the record reflect that all council members are present. This evening, our agenda is rather short and we're gonna have time for public comments. And this is an opportunity to address the council about any concern or idea on any topic. And please be considerate of everyone. Public comment will be limited to three minutes per person and please state your name for the record. I was not paying attention. I, I don't think there's anybody new on the call and there's already one hand raised. So I think we're okay with the description.
Heath Sato, the time is yours. Please state your name for the record and limit your comments to three minutes.
Everybody, Heath Sato, Ogden resident. Angela, your dogs have been slaying me. I'm loving it. They're real beasts.
You know, kind of exciting over here, you know.
So anyways, getting, getting down to it, when I spoke last week, I just asked why we haven't had recycling for over a year now and why we couldn't review this new tech via Zoom or something. I also said I found it upsetting that, that all the recycling for the whole city keeps going into a landfill where it will stay forever. I, I think everyone is and should be upset about that, regardless of the reason. I asked for more clarification, that's all. And council member Hare provided as much as he knew. I appreciate that and I thank him for it. After he did his best, the mayor decided to be defensive again instead of helpful and suggested I accused him of not caring. I honestly don't know if he cares or not, but I never said that. I will say that he clearly doesn't care about informing anyone about the situation because I emailed the city, every single city council member and the mayor three weeks ago on November 18th about a broken link about recycling on the city website. The title of that email is recycling info on city website link broken. It's very clear what it's about. Currently, the city's website still has a page about recycling that just says recycling is currently on hold and has a link to quote, read more. When you click read more, we still get the, we apologize, we could not reach your desired destination. In other words, the link is still broken, has been for a long time. And I wouldn't have to ask so many questions here if you just fixed the broken link on the city website that I told you about weeks ago. Not one person from the city got back to me. The mayor himself has never once responded to a single email I've sent him, let alone even acknowledged receipt of one of my emails. I will say this, if you want to give people the impression that you actually care, then respond to the constituents that pay your exceptional salary with their tax dollars. That link has been broken on the city website for a long time and I informed you of it three weeks ago. You've still done nothing about it. How am I supposed to believe you when you say you care if you can't even address the simplest little things that would help inform the citizens? Please spend less time complaining about being held accountable and more time earning your salary. Thank you.
Any other, um, public comments? Not seeing any at this time. Any comments from you, Mayor Caldwell?
Sure, I'd love to just address something really unique that happened today. U.S. Attorney General William Barr recognized Randy Watt as one of only six cities in terms of what they've done, in terms of Project Safe Neighborhoods. Six cities in the nation. And John Huber said, had it not been for COVID, they would have flown Randy Watt back and he would have been given this recognition personally. But what they've done is amazing. And as always, the chief deferred to his team, but it's an amazing honor. And the last three years since we instituted Project Safe Neighborhoods, we've had a 29% reduction in Part I crime and a 24% reduction in violent crime. And Chief Watt called out all the local agencies, all the other people that have contributed so mightily to this. It's an enormous accomplishment and I appreciated that council member Hare was there. He got to hear and, and see some of that, but all the media was there. It was a great honor for our police department and the men and women that worked for him. And credit to Chief SWAT leadership and those dedicated public servants that we have. It was a really, really fun and, and cool thing to see. And I just want to call them out for the work that they've done in making our community safer and providing safe places for people to come and to go and to congregate and, and to do the things that we can that we've loved being a part of Ogden. We need to recognize that being one of only six cities in the entire United States recognized for that is, is a huge credit to his leadership and to the public safety people we have that make sacrifices every single day. We love and appreciate them and, and it was a really cool honor to see Chief Watt given. And I, I really appreciate and won't take the, couldn't, would, would, would be, I'd feel terrible if I didn't take the opportunity to just reiterate that and, and present that. We had all the news media there and everything else, but it was a real, a real honor for him. And I hope we all get a chance to appreciate and respect his efforts there.
Thanks, Mayor Caldwell. And thanks, council member Hare, for representing for us.
If I might just add that that was a great honor to be there. It was a very small group that was invited due to COVID. It was an honor for me to, to represent the council. I took a close-up of the letter. If any of you want to read that, I'd be happy to send that over to you. It was, it was great and, and the honor that it gave Chief Watt and our police department for that Project Safe Neighborhoods. And we're the beneficiaries of, of that great leadership and that great collaboration. I was glad to be there. Thank you for allowing me to do that.
Thank you. Any other council member comments? I definitely reiterate Doug's emphasis on shopping local and wearing your mask while you're doing it. Appreciate that, council member Stevens. So next on our agenda is to consider going into a closed executive session. And just so the public's aware, we will adjourn from that, right after that closed session. There will not be any additional business on the agenda after that.
Chair, I'd make the motion then that we adjourn into a closed executive session one or more of the provisions listed in the agenda.
Second.
We have a motion by council member Hare and a second by vice chair Blair to adjourn into closed executive session. This is a roll call vote.
Council member Hare. Council member Lopez. Council member Nadolsky. Councilmember Stevens.
Aye.
Councilmember White.
Aye.
Vice Chair Blair.
Aye.
Chair Chaburka.
Aye, and that passes. Thank you, everyone.